Okay, we're ready.
All right, good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for October fourteenth at seven P M here in the Council of Givers. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in saying that we will be.
Related to what United States of America and this is a rip off of it which stands one nation, America, and individual liberation does as a group.
All right, good evening, good evening and welcome to everybody here in the campers, welcome to those who are watching us live. Or anybody who's watching this in competitive. I will go ahead and introduce number two on the agenda and this will call up your city recorder and help us with that.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Groban.
Here.
Mayor Eaglekey.
Here, Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Counselor Forrest.
Here, thank you.
Right, well, number three on the agenda is there's several ceremonial items. And I'll go ahead and begin with the very first one, which is congratulating our city administrator on five years of service. So now the question is, David is such a fantastic photographer that if you and I come up here for a photo, who's gonna take the picture?
Both can take selfies at the same time.
We do need a selfie, I mean that for sure is what we're gonna do. Um, so we do have a certificate for David, someone asked you to come up here and join us. And I'll ask the, um, and give the department heads a chance to say something if they want to as well, but um, I just wanna say thank you so much. I will never forget first meeting you, uh, when David came here, I think it was on your interview. Um, and he had come to the area and had come to one of the community meetings and right away was very engaging. I was a council person at the time running from air and right away he had asked me some questions and said he, um, you know, I think he had known that I was running and, uh, you know, uh, I think even like maybe looked at my LinkedIn and said, oh, you're from New Jersey and I was like, wow, if, or not from New Jersey, but I had lived there. And I was like, this guy has done his homework, he is already invested in our city, has, um, taken the opportunity to kinda get a look at like who, you know, who's, um, already on the council, uh, what their background information is and not like that sounds creepy, but you know what I'm saying? And I just, I was really impressed from the very beginning and like that's the type of guy that David Millarren is, is he works really hard for the community. Um, I've never seen anything like it, um, as far as like the amount of hours that this person puts in. Uh, we have this opportunity to have a person has all this economic development knowledge. Um, and then, and just in addition to all of the other skills that he really has. So from the bottom of my heart, I just wanna say thank you for everything that you do in the city, because it's not just for North Bend. If you are, are in Coos County on a weekend, there's a good chance that you're gonna see this guy volunteering somewhere else. So, thank you, I appreciate it. I would give the opportunity if there was any, the department has wanna say something and then I'd like to see a photo, so, yeah.
I don't take this opportunity, I can't.
Yeah.
Well, uh, I will say, you know, after being the police chief very north end for the last couple of years, uh, and originally coming uh, out of retirement and working a long career at Coos Bay and didn't really have a lot of opportunity to work for a bunch of different city managers. And so my experience was limited that way, but I, you know, I did have a little bit of experience, um, working in admin, police administration. And I just wanna say that, uh, when David approached me, uh, to come over and, or come to North Bend, which my wife still giggles about being that she went to high school in the red band and I went to high school in Marshfield, it took forty-five years for me to become a vendor, but I eventually did it, but, uh, approached me and talked about the opportunity to come here and I really wanna say that, uh, it's such an important relationship between a city manager and a police chief to make and just as well as the other departments, and I'm sure they would all tell you the same thing. But to have a successful department, um, that relationship between a city manager and a police chief is very, very important. And I just wanted to thank David, but also to let everyone know that we are so lucky to have him in this role as city administrator. Not only does he do a lot of things for, you know, to promote the economic development and the health of the city, but he has done so much for the police department and I am very, very grateful and impressed to have him as our city administrator. Thank you.
Right, we've got, uh, uh, another department head pointing a finger at another department.
Well, only two of us have been here longer than David, so he got rid of the roust and goes, well, rather than, but I got it straightened out, but honestly, great manner. Works his rear end off, gives us guidance and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Danny, proud to come on up.
Simple and sweet. Uh, time is measured by years, we've had five years. Um, progress is shown by actions and landmarks and, and we've moved a long ways in five years. Five years is more than just five years. Uh, we've, we've moved ahead as a city and, and we could see the landmarks, the, the things that we've done ahead and it's due to your leadership and we do appreciate that. So, thank you.
David Miller.
Well, if you don't know me, I like to talk, so any opportunity to talk. Um, I just wanna say, David, thank you for being instrumental and getting the Main Street program going and the whole council for believing in that. What we've been able to accomplish downtown is amazing with your mentorship and leadership and how we're helping the whole community has been a really great blessing and we couldn't do, have done without your leadership. So, thank you on behalf of Main Street and Tourism Department, everything, thank you.
Yeah, very. All right. What a team.
Well, I, uh, I'm Jeff Bridgen, I'm the Finance Director and I've been with the city about, uh, three years now. Um, and I gotta say that, uh, really appreciate David and I'm sure it's taken five years to even get the ball rolling and a lot of the things and the vision that, uh, he has for the city. And he provides us with a, a lot of, uh, inspiration, I would say. Cause it's, if you come to these meetings regularly, you'll see there's things happening again and again and again, and a lot of that is attributable to the leadership of, uh, David Millheim. So David, thank you very much.
Come on down and we'll ask, I'll ask the city reporter to take a photo. Why not, David? Let's get a selfie.
You get a selfie, I get a selfie.
Okay.
Maybe we do a selfie if you get a selfie.
That is actually.
How about that?
Okay.
I think you can do that, actually.
Okay.
So, but, hey, how's this work? Okay, I think, yeah, all right, I got my selfie line up, do you have yours on?
Yeah, one, two, three.
This is very scary, but I think you're supposed to be facing that way, aren't you? In order to like, yeah, you get the, yeah. All right, there we go.
Our, our city with David Miller and I are around is well documented and that is because I, my memory is terrible, so I do take pictures everywhere. I like to call it our digital diary, we'll have this, these memories forever. So come on in, let's get a photo.
See on a car in the parking lot. Voice around, that's our white screen.
All right, is that your phone again?
Stephanie's, yeah.
Okay.
There we go, one, two.
That was fast.
Everybody's worried about who's car is getting stolen.
Yeah.
Uh, we got a professional.
Yeah.
Um, almost, cause the lens cap has to come off.
Did you get one as well with your camera? Okay, we're good? Okay, all right, thank you again for your service. Where am I? Oh, there it is, okay. So.
Oh, then we have more. Oh, that's right.
So our, we have ten years of service, our next.
But, can we get a couple, um, either.
Say it again?
Can we get that picture again, please? Do I, better job on the picture.
Do you really wanna say, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. There is gonna, there is gonna be tonight. Come on, come on down here for one more picture, okay? Come on, join in.
I got you, I got you.
All right, we're sorry.
This is a redo.
That's okay, we're gonna do one more photo and then we're gonna move.
See, you, you wonder why I take thirty photos.
And you're so service.
All right.
It should really be perfect this time around, okay? I know, I know, I tried to. Oh, that.
No, great.
Okay, great.
All right, I'll go ahead and ask the chief to join us here and we have, um, the next item of business is ten years of, um, service. And I'll ask for our police sergeant, so I'll go ahead and.
All right, so, not that that wasn't important, but, uh, now it's time for, for me to do something I really enjoy, so I'm gonna have, uh, Sergeant Jake Holt come up. Sergeant Holt is, uh, a very, very critical piece in the police department. Uh, he has been very important in a variety of tasks. He has, we all know now, he's here to accept his ten year award of service for the city of North Bend. And, uh, just to tell you a little bit about, uh, Jake, he is, there's a number of hats, one, he is our training sergeant, he is in charge of the field training program. So all the coaches that, uh, train our recruits after, before and after they come back from the academy, he's, uh, in charge of that program and that is a very critical piece, especially over the last three to five years, actually, with the number of recruits that we, new people that we welcome to the police department. And it's been a very successful program and that is largely in due to his work. He also handles the scheduling of patrol operations for the police department. Uh, he's been a field trainer himself, uh, and trained a number of recruits. Um, has a degree at Southwestern, uh, Oregon Community College. And, uh, he raised a family here in Coos County, um, with his wife Shannon, is here tonight with him. And, uh, he's just, I can't tell you enough about this guy, he is just somebody that I hear a lot from the community, the people that he contacts, his fellow officers, his fellow sergeants and myself and Captain Perry have really enjoyed working with him and seeing him grow in, in these different roles, particularly as a supervisor. It's not always an easy jump coming from a drill officer and to the sergeant's position, but Jake has, uh, made it look very easy and I really appreciate you all doing it. There we go. Thank you. Yeah, you know, when, when Chief reached out here, you know, a while back asking me to kinda, and do this, I, I kinda had to stop and count, I'm like, there's no way it could have been ten years, but sure enough, I mean, time flies when you're, when you're doing a job like this, um, it's been a really good ten years, I'm lucky to work with such great professional people. Uh, looking forward to the next ten years, I think we're going in a good direction, we're gonna see a lot of good changes, uh, you know, we talked about things that David's been working on and yeah, I see great things in North Bend B D, uh, and, uh, looking forward to the next ten years.
All right, we'll go ahead, you wanna get a photo first?
Hold this thing.
Whoops. There we go.
Yeah.
There we go. So tight down there. All right, what do you, we'll put it now.
Yes. Our president's favorite thing to do in the.
All right, now squeeze in a little bit, there we go, there we go, there we go. Get real close here, you won't, you won't be charged with assaulting a police officer. Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, congratulations on your tenure, so great. Hey, all right, we have just a couple more ceremonial items, number three on the, um, agenda is a domestic violence awareness proclamation for the SAFE project. So, Rachel, do you wanna go ahead and come on and join me?
Right, so we're here today for a proclamation for the city of North Bend. And in the city of North Bend, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs and victim service providers, I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the SAFE project and other community organizations to work toward the elimination of, um, uh, intimate partner violence. In just one day across the U S and its territories, nearly seventy-five thousand victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than nine thousand requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare and legal representation could not be provided because programs lacked the resources to meet victims' needs. The impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole. Here in this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality or other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make funding safe, funding, finding safety even more difficult for some victims. And whereas the need for safe housing continues to be rated as a survivor's most urgent need. And whereas the city of North Bend joins with others across Oregon and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in North Bend. Domestic violence and whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families and institutions and systems. Each poos one thing they can do to end domestic violence or support victims. Um, adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming communities. So now, therefore, I Jessica Eaglekey, mayor of the city of North Bend, here adopt, hereby do proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you for being here and sharing. We wanna know, have some other statistics and things.
I always bring my stats with me because it's my favorite thing to talk about, I'm a bookkeeper at heart, so numbers are my favorite. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we served nine hundred and twenty-seven survivors in Coos County, um, and that also represents the last six months of us serving survivors in Curry County. Um, you might have seen on Facebook or on our social media, we expanded our service areas to include Curry County at the last half of twenty twenty-four. So, our stats for twenty twenty-five, you will see those include Curry County as well. So, in addition to providing our services, um, in coups and maintaining our highest level of service in coups, we also, um, added two full-time advocates down in Curry County and opened a third emergency shelter location down in Gold Beach. So that's what we've been up to in this last year, it's been exciting and challenging, but we're really excited to continue to serve the southern Oregon coast. So, we're super thankful for the city of North Bend's, um, ongoing support, you've always been fantastic and so we appreciate you all, thank you.
All right, would you like to take a picture?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and. Does wanna join us or you can hold this?
Hey, as, as my last purple outfit, I did four cities this year, so. The last purple item I own.
There we go.
Do you need a place for Instagram?
Okay.
I got you, don't worry.
Cause I can. I hope everyone. There you go. An iPhone, I'm like, oh, okay. I just wanna point out, the new iPhones use the Android cord, okay?
So much. All right, we have one more ceremonial item tonight and that is item D Filipino American History Month proclamation. And I will go ahead and ask the guest to go ahead and join me up there, if you guys want to. Yeah, come on up.
Don't be the guy.
Yeah. Okay, Oregon coast. Perfect. All right, well, welcome, thank you so much. Okay, all right. So, I will go ahead and begin our proclamation for the city of North Bend. Whereas October twenty twenty-five is a four hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence on the shores of the west coast of the continental United States. And whereas the citizens of Oregon should be informed of the positive impact Filipino Americans have had on our communities. And whereas in Oregon, thousands of Filipino Americans have made contributions to the fields of teaching, business, government service, agriculture, ministry, medicine and other sciences, humanities and the United States Armed Forces. And whereas it's imperative for Filipino American youth to have positive role models and instill them the importance of education, complemented with the richness of their ethnicity and the values of their legacy. And whereas efforts must continue to promote the study of Filipino American history and culture because the rule of Filipino Americans and those of other people have been overlooked in the writing, teaching and learning of United States history. And whereas this anniversary is a significant time to study the advancement of Filipino Americans, a time of celebration, remembrance, reflection and motivation. And for all citizens to learn and appreciate more about Filipino Americans and their historic contributions to our nation and to Oregon. Now, therefore, I Jessica Eaglekey, mayor of the city of North Bend and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Filipino American History Month in the city of North Bend and encourage all citizens to join us in recognition of the positive impact Filipino Americans have had in our community. And witness whereof I here and do set my hand and cause the sill of the city North Bend to be affixed on this day. Thank you very much.
Oh, I would just like to share that this year's theme is, uh, immigration movement of Filipino Americans. We'd like to, uh, commemorate two significant congressional acts that played a pivotal role of the immigration of Filipinos to the United States. In nineteen thirty-five, U S Congress passed the Filipino Repatriation Act, offering free one-way transportation for Filipinos in the U S to return to the Philippines, but only that we'd nev- to never return. At the time, the Philippines was a U S common law and there was an annual quota of fifty Filipinos who were able to enter the country. Filipinos were considered aliens who could not become citizens and therefore could not vote on property or have the same rights as other Americans. While the law was sugarcoated as an opportunity for Filipino nationals to return to the Philippines, the intentions behind the law were rooted in anti-Asian sentiment and Asian exclusion. In that it aimed to decrease the population of Filipino nationals living in the United States. Only two thousand one hundred ninety Filipinos out of the estimated one hundred thousand at the time took the offer and migrated back, making the act one of the most failed xenophobic immigration laws in the, in American history. But the, the correction happened thirty years later, U S Congress passed the nineteen sixty-five Immigration and Naturalization Act, which became the first federal immigration law to eliminate national origin quotas that had favored Europeans for barring the limiting or limiting Asians from entering the country, also known as the Hart-Seller Act. This landmark legislation opened the doors for thousands of Filipino immigrants to migrate while allowing for families to reunite and to establish multi-general, multi-generational communities across the country. Nurses, engineers, physicians, domestic workers, teachers and others sought opportunities and made the U S their home, bringing with them a rich legacy of resilience, labor and cultural heritage. With, with this new federal law, the Filipino American population has increased significantly. Today, there are four million Filipino Americans in the U S, making them one of the largest American and immigrant populations of the nation. As we commemorate this historical lesson during Filipino American History Month twenty twenty-five, let us reflect on how far we've come by reflecting our ancestors' stories and so standing in solidarity with all immigrant communities, moving closer to a future rooted in justice, remembrance and freedom. That is not just both a celebration and a call to action.
Right, thank you. Well, we'll have the council comment, we'll take a photo and.
Well, we're gonna make this work, I mean. Yeah. Um, no, I think, stay on the corner, I'll take a photo. I'll come this way, oh yeah, yeah, I got you.
You know, wide angle.
All right, so do you all wanna, um, hold off, that way they don't look, don't look at that. Look at me, okay? And then, uh, and then you can look at them, um, and the reason I take about twenty of these is just because of that. Um, I actually study them and people blink and all that stuff. All right, thank you. All right. Was it a lot?
Okay, I believe that concludes our last ceremonial item. So we'll go ahead and go to the next agenda item, which is number four, is there a motion from the council for the consent counter?
I want to accept the consent counter.
Second.
Okay. Um, I heard a first and a second. All in favor to accept the motion, all in favor to accept the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five on the agenda is public comments, and then we have two people here to public comment. See, there's nobody online, right? Okay, but before we begin public comments, I always like to say, um, take a moment to say thank you for participating in the public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of both Oregon Open Meeting Law, this isn't a time for us to have dialogue with you, but um rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city reporter are taking any notes of any action that's needed. So as mentioned, when I call the first person up, they can come sit at the table there. There's a speaker and our city reporter has a timer that should start when you begin speaking, and you'll have three minutes. So the first person um is Mr. Dean Lundy, and then pronounce right. Dean, come on up. I know you want to talk about the topic is public safety. Yeah, so go ahead and have a.
Madam Mayor, thank commissioners, thank you. I, I'm here to ask the city of North Bend, who I really admire. You're, we're talking about uh the, the speed on one-on-one uh uh through uh North Bend and, and uh Coos Bay. And North Bend is so civilized. You come into town, I don't know how you've done it, but it, you have respect for the city. You come in, it's like thirty miles an hour, and then it goes down to twenty, and everyone looks around and admires this beautiful city. And as you leave North Bend, there's thirty-five mile an hour sign, and then you go around the corner and the truck's just punching. It uh, it goes to forty-five miles an hour, and that is your, your uh domain. Is that one stretch of Highway one-on-one? And numbers matter, like thirty-five means thirty-five, forty means ninety. I mean, they're go- we've had two speed um related fatalities across. I, I own the, the, the old oil dock across from the new Planet Fitness, that nine hundred feet of uh, of, of waterfront there that I'm trying to give to the, to a youth program as a, as kind of like a Sea Scout base or a, or a marina or something. And I mean, I have a hard time running across four lanes of one-on-one. It is just wicked. They're just moving through there. Coos Bay and North Bend, we, we, we formally notified, I was a fireman in San Francisco, I've seen a couple of car wrecks. And when I got that property, I thought, this is a blood alley. They're coming around that blind corner. And people are coming out of Keekwood now and making a left turn across four lanes of one-on-one. It is too, too scary, and we've had a, a girl killed a month ago, and her sisters went into the hospital. I don't know the particulars, but we notify, I saw the, the situation when I first got the property and I watched it. And we notified ODOT, we had them down here, we had John Lazar down there on his bicycle, and they wouldn't cross the road. We had Glenn Pedersen down there, we've had him down there for three years, and we've been trying to do a connect the boardwalk uh for, since two thousand twelve. Anyway, ODOT in their generosity wants to, or is agreeing to cut down the, the speed from forty-five to forty. That ain't good enough. We need it cut down to thirty-five through, through that area. Cause Coos Bay is starting new, new um uh uh businesses along that corridor. And it's just, it's, what I'm asking is, North Bend has to agree with Coos Bay to cut it down to forty, and I'm asking North Bend not to agree with Coos Bay to cut it down to thirty-five. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next up for um, we have Mr. Albert, one, one board, got a chair and a microphone here for you. And again, you begin, if you have any documents, you can give them to our city reporter.
Oh, it's all ready. I was gonna rebuild, right?
Okay. And maybe she'll go ahead and present it.
Almost two years ago, I moved to North Bend from Corvallis. I had a shop off of Third Street where I sold teas, smoothies, salsas, and spices. I had other vendors come and they would bring their goods, and they'd pay fifty dollars a month to put them on the shelves, and I'd give them three hundred to five hundred dollars back for what I was able to sell their stuff for. I didn't keep any of the profits, other than the fifty dollars, and that went towards the store run. When I lived there, I encountered a multitude of corrupt individuals to the point that my, my mother, my dogs, my brother, my father's lives were put in jeopardy. I was told that if I didn't leave, that they were not going to be able to remain safe, so I moved here. Since I've moved here, I've experienced similar difficulties with local law enforcement. And it genuinely cringes me at the bottom of my heart to see people awarded for service in fields like training officers when those officers have been beating the crap out of people and have a murder rate of four body count in the last fourteen months. We can talk about that another night. I believe that the individual officer in question, who can be named at another time unless the folks here ask me about them due to our previous agreement, Jessica, we can't talk about that, right? He is only targeting pupils of low, of low income and people who are disabled. If the people who are not provided housing are the primary subjects of this abuse, I believe there is a correlation here. In two thousand twenty-three, North Bend Housing Authority received nearly two million dollars in funding. In two thousand twenty-five, the total budget for North Bend Housing Authority was forty million. The most recent update from International Port of Coos Bay Commissioners Meeting states four hundred million dollars in revenue annually. In January of two thousand twenty-four, there is an estimated twenty-three thousand four hundred homeless persons in Oregon at a sixteen percent rate of increase from the year prior. That means there's an estimated twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty homeless people in Oregon, and eight to twelve percent are homeless veterans. After speaking with Jeremy, I can tell Jeremy from Operation Rebuild Hope, the only homeless veteran housing association in the Oregon coast, I have serious concerns about the amount of homeless veterans that are reported in that statistic due to suicide and just not wanting to stoop that low or have to go in and do that paperwork, as I've heard from several gentlemen on wait lists so far. So far, I've designed a barn dominium and a mobile home complex that can be considered a temporary living structure. Additionally, I've also designed a complex that includes seven hundred and sixty-five square feet of residential units that include bathrooms, kitchens, and basic accommodations. We can house every single homeless person in the state of Oregon for three hundred and seventy-three million dollars with twelve thousand five hundred dollars of annual funding for medical expenses and mental health treatment. We can have five offices on site, and thank you for taking the extra few seconds here despite the beeping clock to hear me out. Um.
Do you think you'll be able to wrap up in a minute?
Less than that, yeah. I believe that we can find local contractors and work through the local Rotary Club and church organizations to find the people to volunteer and the professionals to work at reduced rates uh so that we can put these installations in effectively. The way that the million-dollar fund and loan from the state to North Bend Housing Authority was used was not used effectively. The base side behind Nobie was flattened so that they could sell the land for more. The elementary school the tweakers were sleeping in was flattened so that they could build the little slim bit of affordable housing right there off the side of the road. And I've watched that whole development go up. It's not very structurally sound. The foundation is more narrow than the first story of the structure. That's just generally not wise. And the born dominium that I have here can be constructed for less than sixty thousand dollars with volunteers.
Uh, if you'd like, if you have additional information, I'm happy to have you get that to our reporter, and then we can get out with our, our staff. Um, we do have that three-minute time limit, and we've exceeded that, but we do appreciate you coming in. Anything else that you want to deliver um to the city reporter, we'll go ahead and take those, okay?
Thank you for taking the time to hear me tonight. I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. All right, next item of business then is we have number six of our public hearing. This is number two zero eight four. An ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way contained within county dedication deed nine-one dash eleven dash oh-six-four-six point road. Okay, and I know we have our. As well, so uh we'll go ahead, uh we still have, I'll go ahead and start reading the information for ordinance number two zero eight. I'm gonna read the information for the public hearing.
You should uh.
Have a public hearing in the word, the public hearing first, correct?
Yes, probably.
So um, again, public hearing consideration of rate increase of North Bend sanitation, no?
Number six, if the ordinance for vacating a portion.
We have that, and that's the sanitation, and then this is ordinance number two zero eight four. Yes, so.
You have one that says we're probably saying ordinance, so go ahead and mark.
No, I have two, I, one is an ordinance two zero eight four script, and then I have a public hearing. I think there is, okay. Okay, I have it. Okay, we're doing a public hearing. Okay, all right, as I mentioned, this is the time set for the public hearing on ordinance number two zero eight four and ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way uh uh contained within county dedication deed nine-one dash eleven dash zero-six. Or six, point road to the city of North Bend. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. I mean, they asked the counselors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report for Pony Creek for this? The ordinance, no, okay. Well, the staff, uh, please present their report.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, the north, started to say North Bend Airport, Coos County Airport District uh has requested we vacate uh Pony Point Road, which is dedicated to the city of North Bend by the airport, which also was owned by the city of North Bend at the time in nineteen ninety-one. Subsequent to nine eleven, two thousand one, uh, the entire roadway was closed due to airport security reasons. Therefore, realistically has no utility to the public for, as a dedication for public use. There, we have a sanitary sewer within the roadway that is proposed to be vacated. We have an existing easement already in that portion. No, the utilities exist within that utility. Um, we published this twice in the newspaper for public comment. We also posted only one end. You're supposed to post by law, both ends. One end is in the middle of the airport, uh, next to runway five-two-three, uh, which nobody's supposed to access, so we didn't post it on that. But otherwise, we complied with state law and compliance, so we're here to hear any comments about closure. The airport is a sole owner adjoining the portion proposed to be vacated. There was a mine, a small segment on the south end, which ties into Marion Street, that there is one other owner, um, which is Jeff Marino and Scott Lewis. But that area is not proposed to be vacated, so their frontage remains as a public road.
So um, we have the staff report. I'll now, the public testimony portion of the public hearing, written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to the members of the council and staff. There is a three, there is a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state the name and address of the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance two zero eight four? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I will now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter to the, to the staff? If there's no further question, discussion, then I will close the public hearing. Um, so if once the public hearing is closed, that was number six, and we can launch the agenda, I have number three or seven. Um, ordinance and number two zero eight four. So um, ordinance two zero eight four, this brings us to ordinance number two zero eight four, and ordinance vacated, no, yeah? Okay, portion, um, and ordinance vacated and a portion of right-of-way by right. And ordinance vacated a portion of right-of-way contained within Coos County Dedication Deed nine-one dash eleven dash zero four zero, zero, nine eleven dash one-one dash zero-six-four-six. Pony Point Road to the city of North Bend, Coos County, Oregon. I will ask the city to give the three boards. The report on this part, for the ordinance, is there any further information? I see Mr. Wolf looking at me.
Yeah, so now we could entertain, uh, you could certainly have some more staff report, and you could have a, eventually we'd be looking for a a motion of the first reading by title only.
Okay, it's, it's in the script, so. Heard first from um, Councilor Gerbo, and the second from Counselor Slater. We don't have to have it by title only first?
Yeah, uh, was, was the motion to adopt the ordinance, we need a motion to have it read by title only, because it's an ordinance, we have to have two readings.
I move to read ordinance number two zero eight four, first reading by title only. Second. Your is going to?
Really?
This time. We're, we're just human beings, so I'm gonna strike that first motion.
Well, uh, technically, you have a motion, a second on the floor, even though it's the wrong one, and then you had a second one come. And so really, if, if you really want to buy the votes, you gotta walk back both of them and then go back to the correct one. Or just suspend the rules.
All right, I'm gonna, so, can, may I um take privilege and say, we're gonna strike the first motion from Councilor Gerbo. Go with the.
Strike the second.
Strikes the second, we're gonna start all over. Strike both of those. Who has the motion to, who would like to make the motion to read by title only? One for that. Uh, I move to read ordinance number two zero eight four by title only. Second, first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Schultz. Uh, any discussion? All in favor for the first reading of the ordinance, read by title only, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number two zero eight four and ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way contained within Coos County Dedication Deed number nine-one dash one-one dash zero-six-four-six to the city of North Bend, Coos County, Oregon.
Is there a motion for the second reading by title only?
I'll make the motion, the second reading by title only.
First from Counselor Hamilton, and a second from Counselor Slater. Um, any discussion? All in favor of the second reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number two zero eight four and ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way contained within Coos County Dedication Deed number nine-one dash one-one dash zero-six-four-six to the city of North Bend, Coos County, Oregon.
I'll now, here's a motion to adopt ordinance two zero eight four.
Over, alert.
All right, I move to approve ordinance number two zero eight four. The ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way contained within Coos County Dedication Deed number nine-one one dash eleven dash zero-six-four-six to the city of North Bend, Coos County, Oregon. Okay, I've heard of, uh, first from Counselor Jones, the second from Counselor Gerbo. Um, all in, is there discussion? All in favor? That's why it's not. Okay, uh, so uh, the city reporter is gonna ask, obviously, how the ordinance?
Counselor Jones, I stand you.
In favor.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Gerbo. Mayor Eaglekey.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Slater.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Torres. Thank you.
That was not our best. Okay, so uh Mr. Wolf, was there anything else, any other items that we need to say in that, or can we move on to the next agenda item?
You can move on, thank you.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Long to you. It's on my personal pocket. So now we're moving on to public. Uh number eight was the public hearing resolution three three seven four. Okay, cool, okay. Public hearing consideration of rate increase for North Bend sanitation, resolution three three seven four. This is the time set for a public hearing for the consideration of the rate increase in North Bend sanitation, three three seven four. At this time, I'll open the hearing. Counselors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report? Okay, well, the staff, please present your report at this time.
Uh mayor, for our franchise agreement, the sanitation company is uh permitted to come and ask for a rate increase. Uh they presented it last night's work session. They said that most of their uh across the board cost have exceeded ten percent. Um our franchise agreement allows them to come and ask, and historically have, they have asked for the consumer price index or CPI. They're asking for an increase of three point two percent um uh for their services.
Um I will now open the public testimony, um portion of the public hearing, written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to the members of the council and staff. There's three, there's a time limit, three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the rate increase for the, uh for North Bend sanitation? Okay, anybody in favor? Uh I do see a hand, uh. Set it hands.
Yeah, well, what exactly is the rate that's being, of which is being increased, and what are the services being provided through the sanitation department?
I will go ahead and, should I have the, um, the work surface, speak tight?
So you are in, you're currently in a public hearing, and so this is to receive comment. Um if you ask that question, it's a staff, um. If you wish. Um which is the, but, but you have to close out your public testimony first.
Okay, um so, because the question was, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the rate increase for North Bend sanitation? So I'm not hearing anybody wishing to be in favor of it right now. Um so I'll go ahead and move, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the rate increase for North Bend sanitation? And um so I do see a hand, and so um I don't have time for us to answer questions, but um the question we get on the table is um is anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the rate increase, so um I, we do have our attorney online and he is. Looking at me, so uh Mr. Wolf, I do have a person that raised their hand up, and it appears they might be wanting to speak, so um I can have our city reporter start the clock. And give them the time for the floor, but I know it's not a time for us to answer questions, it's just a time for us to listen.
I can make this one brief.
Correct.
So I'll go ahead and ask the person that raised their hand, this is your elders, um if you want, come forward if you want, and again. Um and so um uh for the record, can you state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Elder, I live in North Bend, I live part-time in Reed's Port and in the mountains due to temporary concerns for my safety and local corruption in police departments. I observed an increase in wastewater earlier this year in June, and there was almost no public consent. There was no vote that anyone had the opportunity to speak up about, and now we're seeing almost a four percent raise in sanitation. I don't know what kind of public notice anyone has received regarding any of these matters, but a four percent increase for someone who's on social security is a significant difference. Someone who doesn't even receive that much, that's even more so. You're gonna lose your property because your neighbors are gonna complain if you have garbage building up outside your house. It's a thing. So, we gotta be able to take the time to give people the education on what services are being provided. If there's trucks that need maintenance, let's give the public that notice. If there's information about uh landfills that cost more to dispose of, because I already know that we take everything to Beaver Hill and they ship that to Roseburg, and we rely on Medford and Roseburg to dispose of almost all of our garbage out here. Uh, one of the things that I've actually asked the local landfills to do is digest the local plastics with petrolopsis microspora, which is a mushroom that eats plastic and turns it into oil. I've also collaborated with a gentleman named Julian, who made a machine that does essentially the same thing. But it can be processed by cars and run automobiles as well. Um they said no to me last year when I took the mushroom support samples to them and I showed them how to collect the oil. They said they were not certified to do that, we don't know anything about this. But if they want four percent more, and they'll turn down a project like that, what's it going towards? Where's that money going? I get I can't ask questions. But I feel like these are some questions that a lot of people might not wanna ask, and I've been told by a lot of people that said they were interested in this, that they didn't feel comfortable coming here tonight, generally, because other people have been shunned away and they feel like their voices aren't heard, so um. I see I got fifty seconds left, I said I'd make it brief. I'll shut up now, if you want me to shut up, you wanna give me another forty-five seconds?
We do have to close the public hearing.
Alright, thank you Jessica, appreciate your time. Let's just give the public some more notice. I would veto the four percent increase right now. They didn't even wanna turn plastic into oil for cars, and I've met a guy locally that turns the oil from local restaurants into fuel for his car. I can modify your cars to do it too, with a C-clamp and a fuel injection line. It's not too hard. I'll literally teach people how at a community college if you wanna let me, but I'm in a difficult situation right now, so I uh haven't been able to stick around to try to apply for a whole lot in town. Thank you for your time.
Wow, so we add um the next section of this public test is to close. I'll now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter to staff? Um is there, um so if there's no further discussion, I'll now close to public testimony. Um I'll now close the public hearing at this time, and I will entertain a motion. And the motion would be to approve the request of the increases for North Bend sanitation authorized in the resolution. Anybody able to read that motion?
I move to approve the requested fee increases for North Bend sanitation is authorized in resolution three three seven four, and outline the proposal rates.
Second, okay, first from Counselor Slater, and the second from Counselor Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor of uh the motion to approve the requested fees for North Bend sanitation as authorized in resolution number three three seven four, and outline. If you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number ten on the agenda, is there a motion of the authorization of the um three-year renewal agreement with Open Text? I move to approve the three-year renewal agreement of the amount of forty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents with open text um for citywide employees' data, backup services, and authorize the city administrator to execute that continuity agreement.
Second.
Our first from Counselor Schultz, and the second from Counselor Hamilton, um any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then that takes us to the number eleven, is the agenda items, or a motion from the council on the approval of the Microsoft three sixty-five G C C licensing.
I'll move to authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement with CompyNet Incorporated for annual Microsoft three sixty-five government, meaning cloud licensing in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Seven cents. Okay, first from Hamilton, Counselor Hamilton, and the second from Counselor Torres. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion on the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is twelve. That is the request by um West Coast contractors for authorization to work outside of the loud. Um now, we're, I know there's a declaration from the counselors.
So I will recuse myself of conflict of interest.
Okay.
So, uh, couns- Counselor Hamilton, can you just state the nature of the conflict, which is that you're an employee of the company?
I'm an employee of West Coast contractors.
Okay, yeah, so you're, are you declaring an actual conflict and you're gonna refrain from voting?
Potential conflict, actual conflict.
You wonder that, right?
Potential conflict.
It's a potential conflict. Okay, so, Mr. Wolf, did you catch that?
Uh it, it sounds like he's just gonna act on the conservative side and declare an actual conflict, which is fine. I don't believe that it is, but, but that's the, a safe play to go. And, and, and please just uh refrain from discussing or, or voting on that, counselor.
Um and as you've explained, I believe our city reporter's already noting that her child, because they have a step away as well, uh not due to a complex, I think bathroom break. Should we, uh we still have form, so we're good, so we're rolling. Um okay, so uh is there a motion for the husband?
I move to authorize West Coast contractors to perform work at the North Bend Airport outside of the allowed noise ordinance.
Second, okay, or first from Counselor Slater, and the second from Counselor Schultz. Um any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, that was number eleven on the agenda, number twelve, so we, uh nope, that was number twelve on the agenda. So our thirteenth um item on the agenda, any action, if any, we'll send them to executive session, we did not cavity. Uh that'll take us to our um, almost looks like the birthday boy over here with the five, our city managers. Uh city administrator's report.
Here from the mayor and council. Uh the uh published version of the city administrator's report is on our website, it's cross-linked to our social media site. Uh couple highlights, um I wanna point out, our uh North Bend Police Department will have its open house on the seventeenth. It'll be from five to seven P M. The first five hundred people that show up get hot dogs, unless somebody eats two hot dogs, and it's four ninety-nine, and uh we might be able to cover them, I don't know. Um there'll be lots of games, challenges, and education, so great uh community events, Sparky will be there. And so it's a great family uh event. Also, this evening, the North Bend Police Department held a meet greet for the donors to the K nine program. Uh got to see Athena in action and work the room. We wanna give a shout out to the Cookwell um casino, uh Coos Bay for hosting and providing great uh um uh food and the venue, and they're also putting on a great concert, uh that'll be November eighth at seven P M. The tickets are twenty-five dollars a piece, a hundred percent of the profits come back to our K nine program. It's the number one great uh country band in the uh northwest, and um uh if uh you are a first responder, law enforcement, uh you go to uh the uh casino, show your identification, or, you know, let them know that you're a first responder, and you'll get a ticket for free. There'll be lots of options there, and so there'll be other ways to raise money and shake them down. Um and uh the library will be holding a volunteer fair, that'll be October eighteenth from one to four P M. Um there's a couple uh dozen uh different uh organizations that'll be there. Uh so it's a great time, if you wanna get involved in the community uh in any way, come check out all of the uh organizations that'll be recruiting. And uh last but not least, um uh our population uh come November first will be growing by one. Uh because uh Mr. Andrew Brainerd, a fifth generation, uh town member, is moving to North Bend. I didn't put that in my report, you know, back to you.
Okay, great. That includes our city administrator's report, and so the next item on the agenda is, it'll maybe be a committee report. So uh we had to cancel our um charge review, so we'll be, oh, we should be working with the city reporter to get the next one on the agenda. So we don't have anything from that, and there was, you know, there means that you might have, you're a uh report, so we're good there. Um there's no community resource, that would take us to our. Love you, uh Counselor Torres.
Um, so uh I just wanted to play on the safe project. I worked with a lot of our um, us those children, youth, and their families within Kuz County, and I get a lot of families from um that really do need to use Safe Project, and like Rachel, I'm really bad at making statistics. So I brought up some more statistics that uh she didn't share that I thought was super important for our community and how much we need this service. And how, I mean, like, it's, it's just crazy to me from uh families uh that I need, and even young adults that come from all over because they're fleeing uh domestic violence, and it's just, it's it's so scary out there. Um so, for example, um in our area, thirteen seventeen served was twenty-six youth survivors. There were seventy-one children sheltered. Um there was even fourteen pets as well, and a lot with transitional housing. The Safe Project would qualify for that. A lot of them do not take pets at all, and I think they're the only one in our area Coos County, in Currytown, that actually do take pets. Um eleven thousand two hundred and forty-one meals were provided this year. Um and I think that was, and then some bigger ones I forgot that they did too, was how many hygiene bags and other personal supplies was over six hundred and six hundred and eight products as well. And then um they have clothing, and they do a lot of other things to make sure that um these uh survivors get up on their feet, and I just really wanna highlight the work that they do in our community and um all the collaboration um to really make sure that uh these children and families get uh the new support that they need when they're within our county.
Yeah, that's all right, thank you. Counselor Slater?
Well, I just wanna focus briefly on our administrator, David Millard. Let me say, I appreciate his focus on team and working relationship building, his focus on strategic planning with goal setting and working to goals to get things done that way. And especially his focus on economic development, using all the tools available. And when he hits a wall, he finds another way to get around the wall. It's uh aggressive for our community, uh has built up a lot of programs, people, and things, and uh I'm really happy to have it heading up our day.
Thank you, Counselor Slater. Okay, Counselor Schultz?
Well, just to mirror, just to repeat, kind of congratulations on my, I've located the awesome. Um and then again, I do think that we need to focus, if you do wanna volunteer, you do wanna support, Safe Project is one of those projects that could always use help, so, so.
Very good. You got that. Great, your merit, so to the Oregon cities.
What did you do?
It made Councilor Garbo's case, right? Travel with the um up to the league of Oregon cities.
You guys are.
Um to be careful, we did not.
I was in the.
You got that, okay, alright. Counselor Hamilton.
Uh, well, I'll pay you back everybody else, congratulations, David, and then it's a huge uh you know, when you talk to the city, or the, the department heads, and everybody's got good things to say, and enjoy working with uh working with you, and you know, it's just, I don't know. We always get all the information we need, you know, when we ask questions, and it's like you, you know, you can throw, throw everything in front of the cart all the time, and it's like here, this is coming on the pipeline or whatever, and so it's really nice to be, have the information ahead of time, so I appreciate that. Uh the other thing is, uh you know, the Safer as, was it Safer as one, is that the group, or no, what was?
Sa- Safe Project.
Safe Project. You know, and I'm glad that that's going on, and there's, I mean, there's all these other uh volunteers uh in the community, smaller organizations, bigger organizations. And you know, it's hard to get the time to be able to, you know, help out a whole bunch of that. But I would wish more people in the community would tag on to these things and help out. Uh Christmas time's coming up, everybody's ramping up for all the, the gifts and uh coming up with money to to, to support the Christmas uh holiday and the kids, and for, providing to the um oh god, I can't talk tonight, uh that organization, so it's really, really a, a good thing in our community. So it's really, uh, really, uh, a good thing in our community and helps out a lot. Uh, I, I help on a couple different committees in the, in the Christmas time, uh, giving, uh, getting gifts to kids. Man, I just want to put one on my head, uh, so I appreciate everybody and appreciate the, uh, city staff, so, thank you guys.
Big motorcycle race, you know, with the, is that? The toy run, that, huh, Monday this year?
Uh, you remember the group that built, that you, you went and talked to, that the pet star?
Yeah.
And they put the, those guys are growing in numbers and they're asking for more help and, uh, they have a big thing coming up, I won't give it away for Christmas time, but, uh, I'm hoping that makes the news and they, they, those guys have just got a vision to go a certain direction at Christmas time.
Yeah.
And it'll be pretty cool, so.
Perfect, hey, Councilor Jones?
Uh, yeah, I want to spend a little bit of time thanking David for his service and all of our staff. And all of your staff, look for your service. Five years ago, we were at a serious fiscal cliff that we're not out of, but step by step, project by project, innovation by innovation, we're keeping things afloat, um, and I don't think that most of us, I, we only have an inkling because we get more information, but most of us don't realize what a massive and complex puzzle it is to try to, um, tease out solutions that keep the infrastructure or our homes and our roads and our schools and all that together, um, with so many competing interests. Um, and that's on top of, um, so many in our community, including me. Before I started learning, made a lot of assumptions about anything that was named North Bend must be the city of North Bend at its heart. And there are so many organizations that have separate fiscal piles we aren't related to that we will get commentary or, um, you know, residents who really think they've been wronged. And, you know, between North Bend School District, the North, North Bend Housing Authority and the city of North Bend alone, those are three separate entities that were often brought to have comment. And so, when you just layer all that complexity, um, these, these leadership positions are big positions and we're lucky to have somebody who's able to innovate and able to and enjoy so much, um, building the teams so that the entire team becomes more uh, aware and competent and puzzling out how we keep our services afloat. So, good job, thank you, yeah.
Well, I'll, you know, tie into a little bit of that, so, you know, tonight on the agenda, um, it's probably complicated for residents to understand that North Bend sanitation is a sanitation facility that happens to be in North Bend. But it's not North Bend sanitation and I think that gets very lost. Well, same thing with like the housing authority, it's the North Bend Housing Authority, that is not North Bend's housing authority, that is the housing authority that happens to be in North Bend.
That has that.
I think they should all change. But I'm just saying, but it's interesting because if you look at the, in the staff report, um, and the comments that were made by the employee of the sanitation department, their cost went up ten percent.
Yes.
They're only choosing to raise the rates four percent.
Doing it just at the social security.
So this is really starting the conversation though because property taxes are coming up. And, you know, here we are, we have, we have one employee, this is David Millard, so the anniversary. And we are trying to ask them to continue to do more with all these rising costs and things, because, you know, we have to pay for sanitation services here. But our, but what we're bringing in on the property taxes is really not enough to really cover even the, the basic.
Yeah, our property taxes don't cover, we have to draw in everything from external sources, grant writings, which are all temporary. It's kind of like having forty part-time jobs.
And so we keep asking our staff to become the Wizard of Oz and keep making magic happen and you keep delivering. So when everybody, you know, asks me like, what, you know, what is the plan maybe for, like, how, you know, what are we going to do? And I'm like, this education and this economic development. And so, um, it's the, the, you know, those are all very concerning things and I don't know what people doing it out there, um, it's, it's very exciting. But I know that North Bend's, what we're going to do is, um, keep focusing on the economic development so we can create everything from jobs to, um, more housing and, you know, hopefully bringing more property taxes in North Bend so we continue to fund the police department, fund the fire department, um, and all of that. So thank you for being the Wizard of Oz and making the magic happen. Now, um, speaking of also in North Bend Police Department, I got to see the, um, K nine in, uh, action tonight over a kind of little meet and greet. And the dog, um, is to get me a great addition, uh, we have raised, I mean, you guys have seen the final numbers, but over fifteen-three thousand dollars. So what I said there tonight to the guests that were there is like, that's such a, seeing the community wrap around that program and support um, makes me whether they are just as, they want to be just tough on Ryan as we feel, um, here at the council too, so. Wanted to make note on that, thank you Fire Department for your Miss Flame, I see that we crowned you Miss Flame and everything went well at the, our, uh, homecoming, who won the game? It wasn't North Bend, but we were winners for the fire department, right? I did, uh, I did attend the League of Orange Cities one hundredth, uh, was their, it's their one hundredth year and they had a big, um, celebration in Portland, Councilor Garboden, um, went with, uh, he was up there as well, he was on the edge of to see the whole time, learning, all these great things and a social security opportunity, you know, the league records is all two hundred and forty-one cities. So all these breakout sessions, you're learning what's working, um, in, um, in the other communities and bringing back some good information um, to share with the, with, you know, our, our staff and, um, it was a really good learning experience. So I wanted to make mention of that and then also we don't meet again until after the Halloween extravaganza. So speaking of like driving safely during that time, Halloween is turned into, I don't know if you guys noticed this, it is not just one night anymore. It is eight, like, it's a season, we're at Halloween, Halloween season. Coos Bay has a downtown thing, North Bend has their downtown thing, then we'll have Halloween on that Friday night, so just like being careful of the little, all of them out there running around. You ever seen like a seven-year-old pop up on sugar, like, they don't walk straight, they're like all over the place and, um, oh, sometimes those costumes don't grow in the, in the dark, so that's all that I have tonight and don't believe we have any other business.